Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's 9:03 a.m., Monday, May 22, 2016. This is a continuation of the Curry County Budget Committee meetings. It was basically continued from the five meetings we had all last week, Monday through Friday, to today. Monday, we moved this particular one to 9:00 a.m. because of some prior commitments other members of the committee had. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Chair Tom Brand.
All right. I'm going to ask you all for some direction here. We have a report from our budget chief, budget master, on how we stand. And we have somebody from the public who wants to speak about part-time commissioners. And anything else that you all have on your mind? Do you want to start with the public speak and then listen to the budget amount?
That sounds good.
I just had one question. Are we going to have a complete copy of the budget shortly? That's a question to the budget officer.
Absolutely not. Not today.
Okay, so that's what we had hoped for when we...
Yes, I was hoping for that myself.
Saturday, so...
Okay, so we're not distracted from that if it's all right. Let's start with the person who wanted to speak. And then get into the budget itself. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, for this opportunity to speak to you. It's always a privilege.
Do you want to say your name?
Oh, I do, yes. It's Cam Lynn. You want to know where I'm from?
No, that's okay.
Want to know my mother's maiden name?
How about your social security?
I know where I can get a fake one.
If we're being facetious here.
Yes, and I am. And I shouldn't be. I had the opportunity to attend a Curry County Budget Meeting last Wednesday afternoon and would like to pass on some of my observations from that meeting. I formed certain impressions during the meeting and later went home and thought further and wrote some of these things down. I realized there may have been some changes since Wednesday, but hopefully my comments are still pertinent. Or mostly pertinent. Wednesday afternoon, I heard the Budget Committee propose to cut the commissioners' annual salaries to $10,000 in order to save money. That's what I heard. But what I saw was an ill-conceived change voted on and passed instead. In other words, one thing was proposed and vigorously promoted, yet another thing was done. This fundamental change in the structure and character of the Board of Commissioners was said to be an idea to save money and could be undone as the Budget Committee gets further along in the budget process. I don't believe this significant change was intended to be temporary. It was intended to be permanent. This was clear due to the way the idea was pushed or forced through without adequate time for deliberation. The effect of the reduced salaries on the budget could have been determined without any voting. So it's not clear to me why the vote had to take place, but it is clear to me that this is not a cost-saving measure. Commissioner Boyce expressed his legitimate concern over this change from full-time to part-time status, but rather than look at the long-term effects of this action, he was simply outvoted, and that was that. I find it highly irregular that the Budget Committee members would cut the salary of all three board members in order to save money if the third board member does not agree to an 85% wage cut and being forced from full-time to part-time status. It may be legal, but it's definitely not right. Fulfill the urge to save money by foregoing your own salary if you feel so strongly. The money saved by cutting the third member's salary doesn't come close to the reputation cost the county will bear due to this ill-conceived plan. And I think it's, as a outsider, a rabbit trail. I think it's worth noting that Commissioner Huxley did take a cut and is to be commended for it. I think this was a type of leadership thing to do. It was not easy. I think a lot of folks that were involved in that probably thought, "Just shut up, Mr. Huxley, and take the money," and that's not what you did. And I think you're to be commended for that direction and pursuing it to the end. The only way that the county will save money by taking this action is if the county ends up hiring a chief county manager. Otherwise, the savings will likely be negligible and possibly there will be no savings at all. That the county might get lucky and find a qualified manager for a low price is possible, but not likely. That is, someone with the necessary skills, that is close to retirement, or maybe they're even retired already. They like to hunt and fish, they love Curry County, and they just want to work here. Well, that's a nice thought, but this type of thinking is not how sound-lasting public policy is made. In other words, there is a way to craft and develop public policy, but Wednesday afternoon was not it. And if I had any emotion in me, which I don't, this is where I would jump up and down and pound the pulpit. I am not an attorney, I'm not an accountant. I really am not up to what the Budget Committee does or what the commissioners do. But as an outsider, I can tell you adamantly and vigorously what I saw Wednesday was not how you craft public policy at all. The Budget Committee doesn't seem to understand that Curry County doesn't just need a city manager. Curry County needs an exceptional county manager. Thank you. If what I saw Wednesday afternoon is how you handle your own salary issues, I don't have much hope of you being able to complete a successful hiring process that retains the qualified depth of manager that Curry County actually needs. Considering the troubled, the current troubled state of Curry County and the proposal to cut the commissioner's status to part-time, has anyone mentioned that a county manager, under current circumstances, will need staff? Again, I do not see this as a cost-saving measure, not even remotely. For the Budget Committee to say they're saving a certain amount of money by this action really doesn't sway me. First, because no one really knows how much. And second, because generally these cost-saving measures in government don't play out or end up as proposed. Therefore, we have the consistent increase in government costs, which is pretty much, we accept it to be normal. And yet we have, and this is probably one of the most blatant I've seen, "We're going to cut costs." As a citizen, I'm saying, "No, you're not. You haven't thought it through." What does impress me, however, is that the Curry County Sheriff has been able, through responsible fiscal restraint, to carry over $200,000 or $300,000 this year, and he would like to be able to use what he has saved this year for next year. That I'm impressed with. This is not the spend it or we will lose it attitude, and I think that's to be commended. Currently, the very low level of leadership coming from county commissioners is an anomaly. At least, I hope it is. In the future, we could very well have three different commissioners that will find it necessary to revert to a salary of $60,000 or $70,000 or $80,000, and they will have very logical, rational reasons for doing so. And by the way, they'll still be paying a county manager $120,000 in staff. As we look back on this decision from some future time, some may actually say, "Oops, I guess there were some unintended consequences." And I would say, "Well, perhaps there are, but definitely not unanticipated consequences." And that's my plea or my desire today, is that you anticipate the consequences that will likely arise and then craft your public policy accordingly. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Carl King and then...
Just one comment. Cam, we revisited that on Friday and had more discussion. And the proposal...
I'm sorry.
The proposal we left for further consideration was to accept Mr. Boyce's offer to reduce his compensation to $46,000. Commissioner Gold and Commissioner Huxley at $10,000 and to create a budget line for a county administrator. And while not everyone was 100% happy with that, I left for the weekend thinking that we had at least reached a compromise that we were all prepared to live with.
Commissioner Huxley?
We had another hand I hadn't filled out. I just saw it over there to speak also.
Yes, ma'am. Did you want to speak? Oh, please.
Yes.
Nancy Sue Rose. I was here at all five days of the hearing last week. I missed 40 minutes. But I was here and I also did a lot of research at home. And this wasn't a spur-of-the-moment decision. For one thing, all three of the commissioners seated today during their campaign set that they wanted a county administrator. Also, a study was done, I think in 2012, that suggested that. And so it's been many years that they have wanted to go that way. And doing research at home, too, I realized that that is something... It's not a spur-of-the-moment thing, and I think it's a very good decision myself.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes.
Morning. I'm Dave Barnes. If you're going to hire a manager, hire the manager. The one thing that I'm still having trouble with, though, is that you were all elected... While you may have said a city manager is, it was part of your campaign, there was nothing in your campaign that said you were going to make this a part-time job. Okay? The people still elected you to do a full-time job, and that's what's anticipated of you. If you want to do it for $10,000 a year, like Commissioner Huxley's been doing for the last two and a half years, that's fine. But the county commissioner position is still a full-time position. And before you go and undo that, I think that that's something that should go to the voters and let them decide whether they want their commissioners to be ceremonial and figurehead or if we want you to do the job that we elected you to do. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gold?
I think it's important for people to note that none of the actions taken at this budget meeting had anything to do with part-time commissioners. That was not part of the deal here. Thank you.
Any other, anybody else here to speak to this? Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really confused because that was an issue. That was a recommendation. Maybe we didn't, maybe that vote got clarified, which just amplifies the confusion that's behind this and the reality that it really, it's a controversial issue. To Ms. Rose's point, yes, that was five years ago. The changes that we have all seen in this five years, being in the BACH office, it needs to, if I can just conclude this way, it needs to go before the people. I remain opposed. I will keep my salary at what I pledged last Friday, regardless whether we have a county administrator. I had one citizen call me up and say, "Well, the county administrator is going to have about 12 people to manage, and that's under departments that are already very well-managed." So I don't know what the basis is at this late date. And I'm going to conclude here with, there is a movement, in my view, I could be wrong, in my view, that it is a part-time position. And, boy, I just, I have communicated to the very best of my ability how strongly I am opposed to that. And one more thing to Mr. Lynn's point. I could comment on several parts of that, but one is, no, we have not budgeted for staff either. And maybe that's a good thing because it'll compound the additional costs that is not justified, in my view. We have adequate staff right now to build back and go forward and try and come through to this hopeful recovery. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Carl King?
Well, I suggest we move on to listening to our budget officer and explain the sheet of paper we've just been given. If I read this, this tells me that we have $225,904 in the general fund that is not allocated to any department. Is that right, Louise?
That is correct. But first, I want to tell you why you don't have a handout of a refreshed budget yet. So I worked all day Saturday. Actually, got home at 9:30. After church yesterday, I worked until 6:30 or so before it was here.
I was proud of you.
The problem was, is when I got down to working on the big, big spreadsheet, after about 5:30 or so, I don't know when that backs up, but every time that I put a number in a cell, I had to save it to see what that number was because it didn't change in Excel. For it to save, what it would do is it'd go to save and it'd say 1%, 2%, 3%. So for like five seconds' worth of work, I had to wait a minute and a half to see the results of that work to make sure everything balanced. It took me probably five times as much to do... I got through the district attorney's spreadsheet because I'm taking the worksheet and putting it into the big sheet. And I mean, at that point, I would have been there until like 3 o'clock in the morning. And there was just no way that I would have got it done. So what I did was I did this spreadsheet to tell you where we are. And if you'd like me to go through the list of what I put into that, I can go through that list.
I have a suggestion for discussion, if I may. First, a question for you is, do you see a way out of that predicament now that we have a full force working? And do you think there can be a change in your ability to save and process?
Well, the problem is, is that I think that, I think the system backs up at night. And it's not late at night either. It's fairly early in the evening because I can't think of any other reason for it to slow down that much. The problem is, is that new switch, which gives us our bigger whatever, I'm not sure, I'm not a tech person, has not been installed yet, and we're still operating on a very low percentage. And I have an Excel spreadsheet that is huge. And so whenever you're trying to work in a huge spreadsheet, it saves the whole spreadsheet every time you try to save even one cell.
Okay, I have a question. We got this far with the last, all of the material in the budget presented to us.
Yes, sir.
It just seems like they would be able to recreate that at some point.
Well, no, it's just that it's going to, it takes a lot of time. I wouldn't, I don't have time to, I didn't have time to finish it. But, I mean, it was 6 o'clock yesterday afternoon, and I was not even... I was probably a third of the way through what I needed to put in that.
So the question for us, then, is to see if we want to proceed without a completed budget or we want to work on this information?
This is the information that is the completed budget. This is the same information I would have given you if you could have just looked through all the sheets of another one of these proposed budget things, documents. I just, there's no way I could probably even have that to you until probably Wednesday if you don't change anything else.
Commissioner Huxley and then...
There's a question, a couple of questions. And the first one for the budget officer. Had you noticed, and I agree with you, they probably, you know, do more backup and so forth. We don't know for sure when they're doing that, you know, on the network, but we do know that it's down still 90% as far as the data transfer speed. Had you noticed it as much, just, or was it something that, with everything else going on, you wouldn't notice in creating the spreadsheet just over the last couple, three weeks?
No, it is, it is slow.
Okay.
But it is manageable slow. But last night, it was so slow, I just really couldn't work with it. And when you get to like in the evening, when you're working after 5, 6 o'clock, somewhere in between there, it just slows down to almost nothing.
If I may?
Can I continue with, okay?
We got to this point. It took five days, five-hour days. We made some hard decisions. We did not make some decisions we could have made. We, for example, passed on the recommendation of the Citizen Budget Advisory Committee to adjust the treasurer's position. We did not go back to the county clerk and see if we could reduce her budgets. We didn't ask the assessor. We accepted his representation that if we touched it, he could lose $160,000 grant. And we're sitting here with $225,000. And my suggestion is, we don't need to have the exact number, but my suggestion is we instruct our budget officer to take half of that. Whatever that number is, when it's fine-tuned, half of it, put it back in the carry-forward to ease the pain of next year, and half of it to reduce the tax rate.
Tax rate?
We're not required to assess at a rate of 5,996. There will be a levy on the ballot in May. The voters are going to decide whether or not to fund somebody outside the .5996. And I think we have to give them the assurance that when we move somebody out of the general fund, we're not going to just take the money that frees up and sprinkle it back around all of the other departments. Now, just for the fun of it, last night I looked at how much $50,000 of reduced revenue would affect, for the county, it would affect my tax bill. It's only five bucks, but it's a message, you know? And I think we owe, either we put it all in back into the carry-forward or I'd be prepared to send a message to the voters and the taxpayer that we'll split this, but rest assured that if the voters approve funding law enforcement, for example, with a separate district, freeing up the general funds we're giving the sheriff this year, that we're not going to sit here next May and just put it back wherever somebody wants it. That we're going to hold the line, that there's nothing we have cut this year other than the sheriff's department, that we can't keep that, and the assessor, I think, that can't stay at this level for next year and years going forward. And that's just my personal belief. I think we ought to reduce the carry-forward that we used this year to make it easier to balance the budget next year. But I think we ought to, in good faith to the taxpayer, give them some benefit of the work we've done and that the county has done in sacrificing departments. And it's a small payday, but it's not a bad one.
Obviously, I made a strategic error here. I cut off Commissioner Huxley, who was speaking to one problem, and now we're kind of shifting gears. So if you can't, let's just go back to Commissioner Huxley's thoughts and then revisit.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's not you.
Well, I thought he was finished. The fact that the computer doesn't work, I don't think is a budget problem. It's just the timing and when we come back to finish it.
Commissioner Huxley?
County Council, question for County Council. Do you know the day this week that the IT subcontractor is scheduled to change these switches out?
I was thinking about that as Louise was talking, and I thought Tuesday was the day, but I think it would be a matter of just confirming that, and I can either go back and check my old emails or just get on the phone.
I would like to confirm that because that will make this issue not an issue anymore. And I guess my, you know, as far as the backup.
During the day is not that big of an issue. It's only when I'm working at night.
But I'm not, I'm not prepared. But I think Carl King mentioned, you know, five hours. I think we were here basically from 10:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. with lunch and breaks. Five days, I'm not prepared to want to go ahead until I can see a new document. And this has nothing to do with the issue, you know, indirectly, but this is not a negative comment as far as the issues that the budget officer ran into. But if we know that this week to confirm Tuesday and then come back in a day that's convenient for all members, and I think we addressed that issue the right way unanimously to accommodate a particular schedule for this afternoon for one of the members, and I think we need to do that. We don't need at this point, because something like that, to say, "Well, you know, we've done pretty much everything. You know, let's just go with this number." I'm not prepared to do that.
Okay, Sam Scaffel?
Oh, yeah, I just want to say, I don't need to see personally a refreshed budget. I know where we started. We've hit the changes item by item as we went.
I can itemize the changes that I did.
And I think if the budget officer is comfortable with those changes, then I don't see why we just couldn't vote to adopt this.
Well, we can't because it's not balanced yet.
So there, excuse me, Commissioner Boyce? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. As it relates to this week, I'm trying to understand what the pressure is in the whole schedule. I'm not saying that there's a lack of obligation here to get it done this week, but frankly, I think she needs a day to just walk away from this whole thing. And so this week was a pretty easy week for me with other matters, and that's kind of, that calendar is getting full really fast. So correct me if I'm wrong, can this be just responsibly delayed to next week and take this pressure off her? Perhaps the new switches will get installed and we can regroup. Which leads me to the volunteer effort that you three have all made, the sacrifices your families have made. You deserve a tremendous round of applause. So I'm not trying to drag you back here additionally, but for what that is worth, Mr. Chair, is that a possible approach? Thank you.
Ms. Coleman?
I think that if it is important, I kind of think it's important to have the refreshed budget so everybody can see the changes that were made and how they affected everything. And what I would like to do is to be able to give you that refreshed budget as soon as I can get it this week and then give you guys like a week to look at it one more time and then come back and make the final changes and approval. If we could do that, we do have time. I have until, I have to advertise the financial summary by a week before... I usually do it a week before the meeting. I think it's five, five days or something like that. But it's a weekly paper, so... But I also have to have that to them in time for them to get it published, so a couple of days before that. So, but that gives us almost two weeks of... So, but that gives us almost two weeks of time before I have to do that. So I, I think that I would feel more comfortable if you could look at everything and make sure that I got everything that you wanted me to get. And I could, I'd like to take the time to go through and tell you what I did do, so.
Could you hold just a second then, and, uh, Counselor Hunk?
Nope, those were going to be my questions for the county accountant was, what is the overall budget schedule for publishing adoption? And what is, what, what are some of the dates and deadlines that the budget committee can operate within?
I do need, I do need like maybe a day or something to get, um, the financial summary and the, in the forms from the Department of Revenue that's required to publish it in. You know, there's certain form that you have to publish it in. I know that in that huge spreadsheet, there's a sheet that has that form on it. I just don't know if it's feeding correctly. And I would have to really make sure that everything that's supposed to be in that feed is in there. Otherwise, it's not gonna be correct, so it'll be a work.
There's one other thing is that the process is that we're doing the proposed budget. There's gotta be the adopted budget. That means the process of the commissioners meeting. And then they've gotta certify and, and whatever it is we do with the tax rate. Categorize all of that. And that has a timeline also. It has to pass through.
That's all the same day.
What is your drop dead date, Louise?
The, the day that we, we need to adopt the budget is June twenty-first, which is my last day.
And that's the, when you say...
You say that with a big smile.
You mean the Board of Commissioners.
The Board of Commissioners need to adopt the budget, um, before the end of June. And that date is set for June twenty-first.
Commissioner Huxley and then Carl King.
I have a scheduling problem. And I just need to know when the last day we can vote. Louise can read her requirements.
Budget Committee.
Can someone just simply tell me that number?
You mean the Budget Committee?
The Budget Committee. I would say, um, the second week of June.
Well, I'm away from June first until the twelfth or the thirteenth with travel or family health issues. So we, if you want my participation, it needs to be before June first.
Mine is kind of the same. Excuse me, Commissioner Huxley, did you have something?
Well, I, I just wanted to correct the budget officer. It's June thirtieth. Give her a hard time.
Well, I, I did say that. June thirtieth is the last day to adopt the budget. It's scheduled for June twenty-first.
Yeah, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, offering possibly, uh, Budget Committee member King could participate by phone, uh, if that helps.
I'm gonna be in, in an airplane a lot of that time or at a, an event that may not have phone coverage in which I'm gonna be...
Wouldn't be a sporting event, would it?
It would be a fundraising event for a major charity.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gold.
I'm just wondering if we could do this next week. Monday is a holiday. Monday's a holiday. How about Tuesday?
Our, okay, there's a, there's a thought. Commissioner Huxley, did you have something else?
I was gonna try to see if we could do that, you know, possibly if not the end of this week, the first part of, of next week.
So let's summarize this. We've agreed that we're not gonna proceed with just this sheet. Is that correct? I mean, we haven't formally agreed, but it looks like that's where we're headed, that we're gonna wait until we see a full proposed budget, and we're gonna have some time to look at it before we convene again. At that point, then, we are able to do the, the things that have to do with the, um, tax rate. Do we want to set that issue aside and talk to Carl's point of where that excess, whatever it is, how that's gonna be handled? Uh, Commissioner Huxley.
I'm not, can, you know, may I go back to, you know, and then flow back to answer what I, what my position would be on that? But to back to the budget officer, assuming, and that's all it is at this point, assuming that the network issues, the switches are replaced tomorrow. And even if they aren't, your comments been, you haven't really experienced significant issues like you did over the weekend during the day. But I think it's fair to say that most likely they will be rectified by tomorrow, if that was a scheduled day. Do you feel that we could at least get the copies of the budget revised document before the end of this week? To the, to the committee members?
Um...
With what you know right now?
With not knowing when they replace a switch, bringing everything back up, how long that takes. Cause the last time they did that, it took like four weeks, and we were extremely slow during that time. I, I, I just, please let me finish. I don't have a lot of problems working in Excel on the smaller spreadsheets. But when I am working in a large spreadsheet and it will not record anything that I entered until I save it, and it takes so long to save because the system is so slow. I, I don't know what it means to replace a switch, how long we're gonna be down. Cause I am assuming that we're gonna be down in some way. Um, the IT things just take some time. I can't promise you that I could have it by then. And I, I'd just like to make a comment. When, when we changed things that affected all of the funds and we changed all of the administrative fees and we changed a payroll, um, component, when we changed all that, it means that I have to change a lot of things in this proposed budget. And that's why it's taking so long is because I have to go in and change and make sure it balances and change and make sure it balances. But the only thing left for you to change that affects all of this like that is if you, um, if you cut days in this year. So this is my timeline. I can certainly have that, um, refreshed budget to you by Thursday. I'm sure I can. I might even be able to do it by tomorrow, depending on what IT does and, and how much that takes away my, um, if I'm down. This budget is based on internet feeds. Therefore, if I don't have internet, I don't really have, um, information in this budget. Okay, so, but if you come back next week and tell me to change, um, something that affects the budget like that, like cutting days, which affects every single payroll, affects once again every single administrative fee, I worked on those things, um, for probably all day Saturday and maybe an hour and a half on, on Sunday, on just doing that part before I even started putting it into the big spreadsheet. So if I have to spend two to three days of, of revising the budget once again for a big change like that, and you guys are all gonna be gone, um, the first week or so of, of June, I, I don't know if we're gonna get the budget done in time to approve it before I have to post it in the paper. I just wanna, I kinda like to know where your, where your thoughts are of... What I have is of that two hundred and twenty-five, my understanding was that we're trying not to use road funds. And if we don't use any road funds, we would still have to find any road funds at all. We'd still have to find ninety-four thousand dollars of cuts to balance the budget. Or we could just use as much road funds as we absolutely have to, which is ninety-four thousand dollars.
I, I thought the two thirty, two twenty-five was after taking all the road funds out.
No. We have, you have not instructed me to take the road funds out yet. It was, was supposed to be a decision after we went through all of these, um, other cuts that you told me where, where, where will we be then?
Well, we're not gonna touch road funds. So let's start and find ninety-four thousand dollars.
You have...
Commissioner Huxley.
Okay, I, I think if we could, as a group, ask County Council to see if he could contact Dan Springer and with the question, because this, with the configuration, this whole thing has been reconfigured. These, these routers or switch, switches, whatever you wanna, I guess they're more technically switches. And there is this consulting firm that we have contracts with that are authorized, representatives for the manufacturer, which happens to be Cisco. I understand you're gonna be here also. It, it will take the system down, but it will not be down for long because it affects nine-one-one. That's the reason that, that there's the, all this scheduling. The reason it was, there were issues for weeks after the last time was that we went with something that had a hundred percent speed. We replaced it with a used product that had ten percent speed. And it's been that way ever since the first of the year. This, that will not be the case here. I think it will be a matter of a very short part of the day because of all the preconfiguration, everything that's been done. But, but the, you know, the contractor can confirm that, and I think we can have that answer today. I think things would be back up if, if this is done, scheduled and done. It will be done the same day, and the speed will go back to one hundred percent just pretty, pretty, very quickly, that same day, I would expect. They can confirm that opinion, okay?
Commissioner Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Simple. Commissioner Gold and, uh, Budget Committee member Brand, you still, do you support the statement that Mr. King just made that, uh, we're not touching road funds? And the reason I ask that, okay? I don't see how we can push her any harder. I mean, I'm reading, it's pretty simple to, to see the effort that she's putting out, and I'm concerned about that. Even at a hundred thousand, that's less than one pers, excuse me, less than one half of one percent of the total budget. I appreciate the high principles that Mr. King has regarding those funds. And we have figured out a way with the leadership that's been in this room the last six days, business days. But I'm asking if you two are gonna stand firm and support what Mr. King just said. Thank you.
Commissioner Gold.
Um, I'm not sure whether it would be possible for us to meet this Friday. I don't know where everybody is.
I'm out.
You're out, okay. Also, I'm thinking we could come up with some other possible cuts. If we did that today and you go back to the drawing board, is that gonna be a huge issue if you're, you know, going through it the first time, you know?
Um, it, I mean, it depends on the cut. But like I said, if you wanna cut, uh, days, that affects so much of the budget. It's not something I can get back to you by Thursday. I was not able to come back to you today after two days. Um, so I don't know if I could. It depends on what you want to cut.
I'd like to make a comment. I, I, I guess I have to admit to, uh, missing something, uh, important. I thought we already voted to say we're not gonna use road funds.
We did.
And to say that we still have road funds in here is just, is, is almost knocked me off my chair. When I say road funds, I'm using reserve funds to the sheriff's department in any form and any category.
Yes, and the, the reason is, is because you have not actually said, take that line item out. You said, we have to decide what we're going to do once we get these numbers of what we've just already done. I thought that's what you wanted to see is how much we can, um, reduce road funds by.
Yeah, and I left...
And that's basically what I'm giving you is you can reduce the three hundred and twenty thousand by two hundred and twenty-five, nine oh four from what we've already done.
All right, so we're, we're gonna end up in the same place. And I, it's not a major issue. I just, my understanding when we left Friday was that I'd be interested to see what the number is, not using road funds and how much we're gonna have to put back in. You're saying just kind of the other side of that coin, and they work out the same. I understand.
Yeah.
So that kind of points to what issues we have. Do we wanna clarify our relationship to those road funds? I'm having a little trouble exactly defining, but I think you all know my intent. And then to cover that, do we wanna talk about some eventualities that, for those of us who don't wanna use any road funds, uh, outside of the road department or their savings account, how we might cover that as an eventuality and think, so that that gets into your... We cut down on the number of times you have to redo this, this budget. And I think I know where I would suggest how we cover that number. I think you said it was ninety-four thousand.
Ninety-four thousand and ninety-six dollars.
So we have some things we can be productive on today and then start looking at dates afterwards. Would you agree? But Sam Scaffel?
Yeah, for the budget officer, if, if you were instructed to make the changes that we've already, that you already understand are changes and to, um, apply only as much road funds as necessary to make a balance, would that, I mean hypothetically, would that be enough instruction for you to just carry on?
Well, that's, this is what it would be, is if you did, if you said just use as much road funds to balance, I would be using ninety-four thousand and ninety-six dollars of road funds.
You're sure, you're sure of that already with the, with the numbers?
Right now, yes.
So, but that is something that, if that was, if that was the direction, you could carry that out.
I could carry that out. It wouldn't, it'd take like three entries in the budget.
Right, and, and I, we could, we could conceivably, uh, adopt the budget and approve the budget and, and send it to the Board of Commissioners for adoption in that...
I would like it to be reviewed one more time before, because once, once again, since I have to still put everything into that big budget, I can't have you approve today because I need the final budget numbers, bottom line numbers for you to make that motion.
You have to approve a budget document. You can't approve this...
And what I, what I would have to say, you'd have to say is, I approve, like we said Friday, I approve the budget in general fund in the amount of this dollar amount. All the other funds in this dollar amount, which I don't know today what that dollar amount is. And then you have to, um, approve the tax rate. So that's what your function is, is to approve the budget at dollar amounts?
No, yeah, I understand that. I just, I mean, I know you can't adopt the budget without having the budget, but I don't think, I don't see why you need to.
You could approve it in a dollar amount, but I can't give you that dollar amount for the other funds right now.
Well, what if we just said we don't?
You have to give me that dollar amount. It has to.
Well, I, it's just not my experience, but I guess, you know.
I, if I may, and then Commissioner Boyce, do we have to do the allocations? Are we just approving by funds?
It's not, it's not appropriation levels. That's, the board does that when they approve.
Okay, that's the board.
I mean, when they adopt. When you approve, you're just approving the budget in a, in a dollar amount.
Let me ask one other question, then Commissioner Boyce, then Commissioner Huxley. Did you wanna speak?
Nope, I'm just waiting. And I can, I can step away real quick and go find out that computer question if that's anything.
Well, let me just hang for a second.
Yeah, we need you here.
I was approached very nicely and tactfully and without ever, I'm not feeling threatened, by a few people, uh, in our government here about, please take road fund savings or however this should be referred to. And that was before we started the budgeting process to see if we needed it. And it got me thinking yesterday, is there something else going on? Is, are we established, is there some pending legal law, some change that's gonna come down the pike that are using road funds again this year, gives permission then? Or implies some legal imperative to have to continue using? Is there some other issue that, that would, that makes using road funds something other than just a financial transaction? Is it a, um, so, something is just getting me to start questioning why there's such a focus on using road funds? If we can balance the fund budget without it, uh, and it's apparently not a, we're not in an emergency or fiscal crisis, what's the concern? We should all be grateful that we're not using our savings. So if, if you give that a thought and, and, uh, I don't know, I'm not trying to tell you to keep it in mind. But for me, it's, I'm starting to wanna look even closer now at the budget. Is this something that's supposed to be distracting us? Is this something that, this concept of using road funds, is, is, where's that coming from? And, and now I think I said Commissioner Boyce and then Commissioner Huxley.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. And that was well said. And I, it, it's got my wills, uh, processing here. Uh, if I missed it though, Commissioner Gold, I did have a question for you. At one time you'd said two hundred thousand in some of our previous directions for, uh, Ms. Callstrom. And, you know, I'm not trying to back you in a corner here, but, but I wanna, I wanna finish, please. In the, and, and I know of nothing that's risky here for us. It doesn't matter. We gotta make... We've got to make some tough decisions. We've got to, we've got to work together here, the six of us compromise, whatever it takes. Going back to, to the principle you have there, if we've got to roll up our sleeves and find another 100 grand, yeah, I, I, I don't think that's, I think we've done that. And, and so do you stand firm? I guess that's, if you answered the question, I missed it. Thank you, Commissioner Gold.
Well, let me answer you the question. When I made the compromise at the BOC meeting, the compromise was simply to take, take road funds and take contingency just to get us moving in the right direction. I never really wanted to take road funds, but I did that simply, a compromise, simply to get us, so Louise could come up with a budget. Then we could go back and look in every single department like we've done this week. We did not have time at the BOC meeting to go back and look at every single department. And that was my impetus for doing what, what I did.
But is it off the table completely as Mr. King and Mr. Brand?
I would like to go back and see if we could find more funds to defer having to spend road funds. I didn't think the Sheriff's Department should take the whole hit. I felt very strongly about that, but.
So I'm going to interpret that.
But I think everybody's going to have to, to sacrifice.
No, I, I understand. That's why we're here. But I'm going to interpret what you just said as it is not, it's not an option. Done.
Let me just say this.
You can, you can answer it later if you want, but thank you.
Well, I can answer it right now.
Okay.
I will do everything in my power not to have to use road funds.
Okay.
Commissioner Huxley? Excuse, Commissioner Huxley?
I, I think we definitely, let's verify, we can verify with a phone call, you know, on the, on the one issue of the, the shutdown of the system to replace the switches. Number two, we just need an updated document to see where we're at, to say that we can remember everything that we did and all the changes that will be reflected that nobody knows until these cells and these calculations take place. It would be, um, it's not prudent to, to do otherwise other than to wait and to hope, you know, not to hope, but I would expect if, if Tuesday is the day that we would have Thursday latest, possibly Wednesday, but Thursday latest, an updated document to go from there. And then you look and then you think, as you go through, there are other, there'll be other thoughts that come up guaranteed. We'll have other discussions. I can't tell you what they'll be, but the numbers that we see will be, will prompt us for other, prompt me for other discussions for sure.
Commissioner.
It'd be helpful to know where we are on the carry forward. That's the other number that's sort of a balancing number. We thought we were starting this process with over $900,000 of carry forward. How much is being committed to this budget and how much is being carried forward for next year?
Okay. Okay, so the carry forward into this year from 2015, 16, that's the carry forward that we're talking about, was 977.
The carry forward from 2015, 16 or 16, 17? Because we're going into 17, 18, right?
Okay, the carryover that we know about is the carryover from 15, 16 into 16, 17, this current year.
Oh, and 16, 17?
What are we predicting we have going into next year?
No, in two.
Excuse me, let's kind of get back to one at a time. Let's go back to, uh.
The number that we've been talking about is the carryover from 15, 16 into 16, 17.
That's what we're living with right now.
That's what the, the extra carryover in revenue into this year that should basically carry over into next year.
Commissioner, and then Commissioner Huxley, and then Boyce.
So that is the number that we think will be there on July 1st, as best you know?
As best I know, I, I mean, it's, it's unanticipated revenue, so there's nothing budgeted against it.
I understand. Now, the question is, how much of that 977 have we put into the budget for next year already?
500,208.
Commissioner Huxley.
Okay, this, this is a specific question I, I had this morning at some point to ask the Budget Officer on April 5th. We had a meeting and the initial amount. Be correct here. The suggested amount to carry forward from this 977, 359, that's the exact amount. The carry for, the recommended carry forward was recommendation number three from the Budget Officer was to budget 450,000 of the 977, 359. And this is where I'm still fuzzy as far as how these things came back. The recommendation or the suggestion, well, no, the direction to the Budget Officer on April 5th, Wednesday, April 5th, was to remove from the forecast process or from the worksheets, the 450,000 carry forward. So direction as of the meeting on April 5th was not to carry budget any amount of that The, then, then that, there was an email from me to the Budget Officer confirming all the recommendations and our actions or our direction to make sure that there was no question. And that email was on April 6th at 6:26 PM, so the evening of April 26th. And again, on recommendation, um, three, it was to budget, it said recommendation three, budget zero of the 977, 359, unanticipated carry forward. Then we went, if we fast, then those recommendations came back for an additional meeting on the 12th and I believe on the 19th, you know, on the Wednesdays. But, um, so then on the, either the 12th or the 19th was Commissioner Gold's altered in order to get it to the next step, recommendation of, let me, let me back up. That information came back the following week, which would have been the 12th, I believe.
Commissioner Huxley, are you looking for verification of the statement you're going to make? If we're challenging, maybe you can take time to look at that.
I'm looking for clarification on how this ended up where it was. And there was a worksheet, a general, that came back on the 12th. It was presented on the 12th. And the, the, to where with the direction that had been given, what we were out of balance because we had no idea with all the different directions that were given. Okay. It was one, I'm going to round it off, well, I won't round it. It was 1,094,357. That then was out of balance after all of the direction the prior week. Nobody had any idea until it was all processed through, through the spreadsheets. Then we went back and there were other cuts and interfacing with the Budget Officer between the 12th and the 19th during that week, uh, with that, now that known 1,094,357. Now, when we came back on the 19th, it was considerably less, the, the number was 407,014. Then there was the meeting that Commissioner Gold, Gold has referred to where in order to get it to move to the next step. Okay. She suggested the 207,000 or 207 and something and 200,000, oh, that was carry forward from, that was carry forward.
207 from the carry forward and 200 from the.
200,000 from the road funds. I don't know where we ended up with the extra three, at what point was the decision made or discussion or the meeting where the extra 300,000 came into play? That's what I don't know.
Can you give me just a moment? Do you have news for us? That's why I looked over at you. About the system, were you?
No, you had not excused me to go do that. That was not our tech fellow.
Oh, okay.
That was our parks fellow who had some other information for me going on.
Well, I think you're excused to go.
I am?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll be back in a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Louise, come on.
Um, I would have to, because I didn't make a note of the date that I wrote this, but it was either the April 5th or the April 12th meeting. I was told to add $30,000 of the extra carryover of 977, 359 to the fund balance, which totaled 293,208. And I was told to do that. And I believe it was the April the 5th and it, but it could have been the 12th. And that was from the board meeting, yes.
Commissioner Boyce?
I'm having a hard following all of this.
You know, and thank you. I, I.
I'm not sure what the point is.
And, and that's where I'm going to go here. We're going to dig in our heels. There's, excuse me, not going to be any compromise and we're making her job impossible. That's, that's, that's what I'm, the take I'm getting from this conversation this morning. Very concerned for her health, for the process, for some resolution. Forgive my little bit of frustration here, Mr. Chair, but, um, again, digging in our heels so we don't have to compromise on something that, we're running out of time. We represent people and it could be, I'm going to take a wild guess here, that it's 50/50, that don't care about using a minute, is that the right word? My minute portion of the county reserve funds so we can get on and conduct business. We've got a lot of other things on this budget that we need to deal with. So I'm just going to, um, ask the committee here to reconsider where this is going and reverting back to all the past information. And it almost gives the appearance that somehow she has arbitrarily done something here and I'm, I'm just getting a little, I, I don't, I've got a difficulty with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner.
My memory is that when the Budget Officer made her first recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as to how much she was comfortable of the carry forward using, it was, my memory is the number was 30%.
It was 450,000.
That's correct.
Almost half of it.
Yes.
Almost half. If you take what the 500,000 that we've been told is being used and if you add the 94,000, it's 58%. Now, we're not making her job any more difficult, taking the 94,000 from the carry forward than taking it from the road fund. And my suggestion is that we can send Louise off to prepare a final budget if we vote to take the 225 shown in the general fund and put it in the Sheriff's Department and take the 94,000 of carry forward and put it in the Sheriff's Department revenue and take out, or wherever it has to go, to take out of the Sheriff and Communication all road funds. And that doesn't require going back and recalculating all the numbers. So she could have this document to us on Friday and we could meet next Tuesday and approve it, the recommendation. And that, that's my motion, that we use the, whatever it is that's still in the general fund plus 94,096 of carry forward as revenue to replace all road funds that are being used as revenue in this budget.
Commissioner Gold.
I just want to be clear, if we use the 94, we're taking it off the 500. Is that correct?
You're going to, you're going to increase the, um, carryover budget by 94,000, so it'd be 594,208 increase in the, um, beginning fund balance for next year.
Uh, was, was, that was a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Let's go to discussion.
Mr. Chair, my, my question just got answered. Thank you. With the figure that she offered there.
And then how much is going to be taken out of the road funds?
Nothing out of, in the general fund.
Commissioner Huxley.
Are you comfortable, you haven't been in the past, but are you comfortable taking almost 600,000 out of the, out of the carry forward, which would leave?
Well, I think that.
300,000?
I think the discussion is, is, um, I'm going to go back to one of the documents that I, um, kind, I handed out, um, as a forecast of our ending fund balance this year. And the forecast was using 30% and, and it was a very rough forecast. I'm not going to stand by this number and say this is the number that's going to carry over. And I, I spent some time on it, but not an analytical amount of time. It was a fast kind of, where are we now? What's projected for the rest of the year? So this is probably where we're going to carry over. And I projected using that 30%, 580,000 carryover from this year into next year. And, um, so if you use that 500,000, this could be a little bit less than that, but it certainly isn't such a drop in a, in an unanticipated carryover that would cause a lot of problems as you go to budget for the following year. Because you have to remember, whatever you're adding to that beginning fund balance, you either have to sustain that or cut that revenue in the next budget. And if you have to cut 50, you know, 500 to a million dollars because now you don't have that kind of a carryover anymore, then that is going to be your problem in the future years when you use your carryover balance like that. You're actually using your carryover balance. That means that you're budgeting expenditures against that money that's being used as a revenue. And if you use all of it, then you don't have any to carry over the next year.
Mr. Gold.
Okay, I want to get this straight. I keep hearing 300,000, 594,000. What is the anticipated carryover? And I'm going to ask you.
Okay, when I, when we talked about using 30%, um, when we, uh, when, I can't remember which meeting it was, it was either the April 5th meeting or the 12th. And I came back to you and you also asked me to forecast our ending fund balance. And that's when I built this spreadsheet that said, this is the forecast. My forecast using 30% or 300,000 was a carryover of 580,000.
Okay, so if we stuck with this budget that we've got right now?
But we've already used 200 of it.
Okay.
And then another 94.
Okay, so we're really using 300?
Out of the 580, I would imagine.
Okay, so.
But those are rough numbers and they're, you know.
So that would leave us right around 300,000 carryover.
Unanticipated carryover. Let me make that clear because we budget for carryover, but this is in addition to what we're budgeting for.
Is the, the 750 operating funds, is that when you said we budgeted for?
That's part of that calculation, yes.
And so, okay, there, when we left Friday, there, there was an undecided issue of furlough days, full year, half year, some, some possible gains from that. Do we want to, want to look into or discuss that? Actually, we can't. We've got a discussion and a motion on that.
Yes.
I've got to get back on track here. I've gotta get back on track here. Carl, would you state your motion again?
Yes, please.
Currently, the revenue side of this budget currently has three hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the road department in either the sheriff's revenue account or?
It's nine-one-one, is it?
The nine-one-one revenue account. My notion is that we remove that revenue from those budgets, and we, we replace it with the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and four dollars shown as the positive balance in the general fund as of our voting today, plus ninety-four thousand and sixty, ninety-six dollars out of the carryforward that is currently being set aside for next year. So that instead of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of road funds, we're taking advantage of the cuts that we've already made of two hundred and twenty-five thousand plus another ninety-four thousand of monies that we would prefer to carry forward, but I'm prepared not to carry forward. I'll kick the can down the road by ninety-four thousand dollars.
Okay, that motion was seconded. Is there any other discussion? Sam Scaffel?
Yes, a, a, as I stated before, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm opposed to the, uh, the part of the budget that removes executive powers from the Board of Commissioners and puts it in the hands of, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, executive power, and puts it in the hands of a non-elected official. I, I don't think it's the place of the committee to do that, or even make a recommendation of that effect. So that's the mother of it, uh, and so therefore, I'm, I'm against the mother, and I'm against all of the mothers spawned, um, you know, and this is just a piece of that. I, I would prefer to eliminate that position. I, I know there's at least four members that are firmly, uh, on the other side of that, so I, I know I'm just wasting a bunch of air, but it'll be a no for me. Thank you.
Any other, uh, comments, Commissioner Gold?
Uh, I'm concerned about the carryover. I would like to look in the budget for more, more ways to, to cut. So, that's my thought.
Commissioner Boyce?
So I'm gonna interpret that we need to call the department heads back here again. Like, third or fourth time? Is that an unfair, uh, representation?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So you must have some cuts in mind?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Well, you can't cut me anymore, so I'm safe.
Well, so, so.
None of us are safe. We could go down as we will.
So the, uh.
Be volunteered.
The motion on the floor that has a second, and I second it. Question then, I, excuse me, Commissioner Huxley?
Again, this is, this motion is, and, um, to instruct the budget officer to make some additional transactions in the, the worksheet, the budget worksheet, and to come back with something that we can then discuss further when we see the results of all of these changes. So to say that this is poured, you know, in concrete, it's not poured any more than any of the other actions that we've approved at this time pending of a review once we see a document that reflects all those changes.
God, Cal King?
Yes, this, I believe, uh.
It will, it will balance the budget.
Create the ability for the budget officer to bring back for our consideration a balanced budget. What's in front of us, if we were looking today with the four hundred and forty pages, we would not have a balanced budget. We would have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of excess revenue. So my motion puts it into balance without using road funds, but it's not approving it. It's putting it up for a vote the next time we meet.
Further discussing, Commissioner Gold?
I think as long as we've got people here today, and she has, uh, Louise hasn't gone through and done the manipulations on the budget. If we were to come back, say, na, next week and make even further manipulations of the budget, I think it would be more difficult for her. I think we would be better off doing anything that we think we need to do today. That's my thought.
Uh, Counselor Huddle?
Um, thanks, Mr. Chair. So I, I, just listening to the motion, the idea of the motion is correct. It's basically tasking the county accountant to bring you back a, um, balanced budget for you to, once again, review and give direction on. It's not, it wasn't to approve a, a budget to recommend to the Board of Commissioners. The second item, as far as, um, the computer goes, uh, tomorrow after hours is when the switch will be turned over to allow, uh, the faster processing of all the county functions electronically. And then just for scheduling information, if it matters, uh, I will not be here next week at all. So, and possibly a few days into the, so that would be, well, I won't be here Friday. I'm looking at the twenty-sixth, and then the whole next week, the twenty-ninth through the second, the twenty-ninth of May through the second of June, and very likely a few days into the week of the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth of June. So that's just what's going on there for me as far as that is. I've tried to arrange for some substitute counsel. We have an assistant county counsel on contract, and I'm in contact with them about, uh, coming in and replacing them. But if that helps inform the board's decision when it wants to try to get things done, uh, I will not be here next week or, uh, into the early part of the week after that.
Okay, we'll, we'll work out a method to poll everybody for their availability dates. But let's get back to the motion on the floor. Cal King?
Would it help if we tabled this motion and then discussed what Commissioner Gold would like to discuss? And then we can take it off the table? We could take it off the table with an amendment? And therefore, we would get done today with what time we have? Anything that could cause the budget officer to need to do a lot of work between now and when we next meet?
Commissioner Huxley?
I'm, I'm not, you know, in favor of tabling, but I'm, uh, I'm reading Commissioner Gold's comments is that, you know, if, if we do this, then we're pretty much done. And I, I don't, that's not my perception. If we make this, it's to, to only balance that, with the understanding that once we see a document that reflects five days, six days of discussions, six days, that we can discuss further, once we've seen what six days of discussions did to the, to the budget, or the proposed budget, balanced or not, what six days of discussions did.
Ms. Coleman?
The six days of, of discussion means that we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and four dollars. I would, I would prefer to have discussions of what we can get done, that everybody agrees on, so that when we come back, um, for review, we're really just going to be asking a few questions and approving the budget. I don't want to come back for review and say, okay, cut six days, which takes me three or four days to process before I could get it back to you to approve, which puts me dangerously, with everybody being gone, of not being able to post the financial statement for this budget unless we move, uh, the approval date to June thirtieth, which I am leaving on the twenty-first. I've given my notice. So, I, I mean, you can still approve the budget without me, but I won't be here.
Commissioner Gold?
I totally agree with Louise. I think we need to get done what we can do today before coming back and coming back and coming back. And I, I see that as what's gonna happen if we don't use this time now.
Commissioner Boyce?
I just wanna be on record that we have made enough cuts. We need to, we need to have some courage here and figure out what the answer is. And, uh, I don't wanna spend any more time on what my view of that should be.
I have a commi, a question for Commissioner Gold.
Uh-huh.
I can't get past that idea that you said you had some further cuts. And I'm curious to know how they.
Yeah, I've got two things I'm thinking of.
How they're gonna blend in with the motion we're gonna have to vote on here at the moment. Do you care to comment on that?
Well, I would like to see, I didn't notice Louise, remember the travel thing, the second conference? I didn't see that in here.
I did fix that.
Oh, you did? Okay, good.
But it's not in that one.
It's not in here?
It's, it's in the finance, which I fixed in the finance, which distributed everything to all of. So it's basically in there, but it's, it's, it was only at like a thousand dollars. And what hit the, the budget was maybe, the general fund was maybe like, you know, forty dollars.
Okay, well, remember every nickel counts.
Yes, and so I, it is in there, it's in the distribution. I did do that.
Okay, the other thing I would like to look at is some furlough days.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Boyce?
Oh, just a clarification, what department that was from?
Finance.
Thank you.
All right, let's, uh, uh, Mr. Jazewell, would you do a roll call, please, and?
Can I read the motion?
Yes, please.
A lot of discussion here. Here's, here's what I have written down. Motion by, uh, and I think second by creating a new grant to use two hundred and twenty-five thousand of general fund and ninety-four thousand out of carryforward to replace all revenues that come from road funds, about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
May I question, did you wanna use all of this or just the vast majority of it? We're almost a thousand.
All of it.
So how do we do that? There's another nine hundred dollars that you didn't mention in your.
Louise can adjust that.
Is that implicit in our vote? Commissioner Huxley?
I have a question back to Commissioner Gold's comment that she would still like to look at the furlough possibility.
Sure.
If we have this vote now, does that basically?
No.
Make, make that other moot point, or, or are we getting the, the cart before the horse?
We, we can come back to this, pass this motion, and if we decide to furlough and save eighty thousand dollars, then we'll put eighty thousand dollars back into the carryforward.
I do think the furlough, pardon me, Mr. Chair, John Huddle, I, I think the furlough concept is contrary, or it's, it's, it would be a significant amendment to the motion made. And I, I don't think, if you vote on this motion, you're not ruling out or approving the furlough idea. But I, I don't see, like the chair said, you wanted to see how Commissioner Gold's thoughts inform this motion. I don't, I don't see them as being really, uh.
Not related.
Fitting within the motion.
That was my understanding also.
Okay, so that's a question of really of, what's the impact of the vote on this motion? It would be to bring back, uh, again, a proposed balanced budget, and then you would still have time to consider the ideas that Commissioner Gold was talking about. And maybe though, um, it might make sense while we're going to task the county accountant with additional work, if you did, you know, went around the date. No, thank you, Ms. Chair.
We're, we're headed that way, I believe. Ms. Coleman?
Um, just, uh, to make it clear what the motion is, is to remove, um, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars from revenue from the general fund budget from the road fund, which will leave us, um, with a deficit of, um, ninety-four thousand, ninety-six dollars more than expenditures than revenue. And to take care of that, to add ninety-four thousand, ninety-six dollars to the revenue line, carryover balance. Does that make that clear?
Commissioner Gold?
Uh, just a point, if we don't give direction to Louise, for instance, on furlough days today, then she's gonna be that much further behind.
I, I, I think.
That's why I'm kind of against this at this point.
Sir, excuse me, I'm, we, I moved table my motion. And the motion to table takes precedence under Robert's rules. And then we can deal with furlough days and take it off the table. And if furlough days are not the will of the committee, then the motion comes off the table as stated. If the six of us decide to have furlough days, then I'll amend the motion to reflect that additional expense.
Okay.
Additional savings. I think that's a simple way of doing both.
Okay, well, I just, I think both should be considered.
Well, I do too.
Okay, uh, a request for a public comment from, uh.
Thank you, John Huddle, uh, county counsel and employee of Curry County. Am I understanding that Commissioner Gold, you want to cut work hours to save carryover? You want to impose furlough days on county employees when there's carryover money? Is that correct?
When there's carryover, we don't have much carryover after all this. And with a huge budget like we've got.
I, I'm, I understand what you're saying, but it sounds like the choice is ninety-four thousand of using carryover this budget cycle, or cutting or imposing furlough days. That seems to be what you're, what I'm hearing you say. I would just, as a person who works here, speak against that. So, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huxley?
I, I don't see it, it either or. I see it as discussing another possibility to cut costs, but I don't see it. If that was the question that, that county counsel had. As a, if you have available carryforward, you try and create furlough days. I don't take it that way. I, you know, and to go back to the furlough day subject originally, went back to, I think, early, early April or late March, when the, the budget officer had that as one of the recommendations at the time. It didn't go anywhere at the time, but it was a recommendation. The concept was a recommendation. I don't see it as a, we, we look at this only if there are carryforward funds. I, I look at it as we, this is a possibl, a possibility to cut costs regardless of what, what else is out there.
Point of order, motion to table takes precedence and is not subject to discussion. So if Commissioner Gold seconds my motion to table.
All seconded.
We have to vote on it, and then we can continue.
All right, um, I'm over my head right now. So we've got that motion tabled, we're not following that.
Need to vote?
We have to vote on it.
The motion to table is what we're voting on now?
Yes.
We'll do this with a, um, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Who do you remember, Huxley?
Yes.
Who do you remember, Gold?
Yes.
Who do you remember, King?
Yes.
Who do you remember, Scaffel?
Yes.
Sheriff Brand?
Yes.
Motion tabled.
Thank you.
So.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. So we're gonna have the discussion, debate, dialogue, whatever, on the, uh, furlough days now, or is that?
I don't think we have a motion yet, but.
You don't have any direction to the county accountant?
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
So what have we got done so far?
Okay, I'll move that we have twelve furlough days, with the exception of the sheriff's department from county employees.
Wow.
Is there a second?
I'm just.
I would second for discussion purposes.
Uh, discussion then? The motion's made and seconded, uh, Ms. Coleman?
Um, I'd like to, to clarify, um, the motion a little bit. When you say sheriff's department, I'd like to know which, which, uh, departments within the sheriff's department we are talking about? Does that include forest patrols? Does it include marine patrol, harbor station? Does it only include the civil and patrol and nine-one-one and jail? Because some of these people work in several of those places, um, and are portioned out. Does it include emergency services, and does it include juvenile?
Um, Ms., Commissioner Gold?
How about if we have the sheriff speak to that, since he's sitting back there?
Take a, take a shot at it, Sheriff.
Sheriff Ford, I really don't know what to say. I just, this is all pretty painful. Um, I was under the impression there was six fertile days countywide.
That was a recommendation, but that doesn't mean that that's what they're, they're discussing.
And then, we're twenty-four seven, and then we're all union. I mean, it's all union over there.
Doesn't matter.
And, uh.
Part of your union agreement.
But like I say, you take twenty-four seven, you're asking us to work a lot harder and get paid a lot less.
Sheriff, what they're asking, saying is that, that you would be excluded. But which departments would you exclude? Would you exclude every single one? Would you exclude emergency services? Would you exclude, um, juvenile? Would you exclude?
Well, juvenile's not in ours right now, so, um, I, if you're saying they exclude sheriff's office, then they exclude the entire sheriff's office. I mean, that's marine patrol, forest patrol, there's nine divisions.
A, adult parole and probation?
Uh, parole and probation, um. Parole and probation, well.
Are they 24/7 probation, adult?
Well, yeah, they're on call 24/7 because of, you know, if somebody gets arrested in the middle of the night. They don't know time wise.
I just want to make it clear, if you say exclude the Sheriff's Department, exactly what are we excluding?
That's all we've got him up here.
The entire sheriff's office.
But emergency services also, or not?
Yes, I mean, he can be called out at any moment for any type of emergency.
Just asking.
For whatever it's worth, that was my understanding, was when we said Sheriff's Department, we're talking about all of those people we depend on at all hours.
That's just what I, I just wanted to make it perfectly clear.
Glad you brought that up, so we understand.
I was a little confused, I mean, this whole thing's confused me, so.
Big changes.
You're just part of the club here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Boyce.
Where do we stand with the road fund department? Because when you add the, I know it's a different union, no, they're not union now, excuse me, but where do we stand with the Ford?
Well, that was my other question, is what other county services are essential services that I'm not sure if there's employees within the road fund that have to be there 24/7, like the sheriff's office? I just, I don't know.
Commissioner Huxley.
My question is to the Budget Officer. I think it was in our conversations last Friday when we were talking about, regardless of the number of days, we were talking about this subject, and you had some dollar amounts. What was your basis? I thought I heard something also with the DA, but I recall, but I'm not sure. What were your numbers based on?
My numbers were, were based on excluding the Sheriff's Department, and I really didn't discuss any of the other funds unless they, because this is just a dollar amount that affects the general fund. That's the dollar amount I gave you. It was just the dollar amount that affects the general fund, and it did include a small amount per day, because other funds will be impacted by this, and, which means all administrative services will be impacted by this. So administrative services will have to be redistributed again, and, and then all funds outside the road fund, or outside of the general fund, will have to be rebalanced to zero from the impact of this within their funds. So it, that's why I'm saying, if you want to do that, I'd rather you did that today, and I would hope that I could give you something by Thursday.
Well, that's why I was bringing it up.
That's just a hope that I can get it done by Thursday.
Commissioner Huxley, excuse me, Commissioner Boyce was next, and then Commissioner Huxley.
Thank you, Commissioner Huxley, I'm Mr. Chair. I'm going to just say, I'm against any additional furlough days right now at this late stage. The compromise it would be to the public for the services, the compromise, the confusion that we're watching here, that it would be for the different departments. I mean, we might just be talking about 50 employees, if you take the bigger departments out. It's, I mean, everybody's watching right now how we're going to solve this problem, and it's like a dog with a bone, and the public's going to get, the employees and the public's going to get their hand bit trying to carefully remove that bone, because we won't take even 100,000 out of the road fund reserve, when last year we did 1.7 million. I am at an absolute loss to the rational, reasonable approach to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Huxley?
Just, again, I want to clarify further with the comments that came from the Budget Officer. It was the, the discussion or the estimates that were provided to us, I believe Friday in the discussion.
Right, I see them now.
Were for general funded departments only, and excluded the Sheriff's Department. So that would have also, and this is a question, but that would have, well, let me ask that question before I start saying.
Just to make it clear, the number that I gave you on Friday was somewhere around.
6872.
6872, was the impact on the general fund, but that does not mean that the other funds wouldn't be affected, because if you're going to have furlough days, you're going to have it for everybody unless they're excluded specifically, like the Sheriff's Department. So it does affect every fund, but that's the, I gave you the dollar amount that would just affect the general fund part of a furlough days.
Okay, so to follow with my question then to that, then that did not include any, we talked about the road department personnel.
The road department is not in the general fund.
Okay, so to answer the question, just, it did not include.
That number does not include what the savings within the road department, no.
Oh, it's Sam Scafo. Oh, yeah, I would be hesitant on doing something like that without coordinating with the department heads and making sure we're not missing anything. You know, for example, if we furlough some pieces but not others, well, we might over, have some over, we might miss that one piece relies on a different piece, and now there's some inefficiencies that result from that. You know, it's an interesting concept, but I think it might be better served with that coordination with the department heads, and also not budgeted for this year, but maybe slide a few in and improve the concept, but not tie your hands by budgeting it.
I have a comment. If we were to vote on your motion in the affirmative, are you assuming that all employees would take a furlough day on the same day? Or is that something to be worked out?
I would think that would be up to the department, once a month.
Okay, Ms. Coleman?
Well, my recommendation was that, that the furlough days were taken and close the county, basically on the same day, yes. Originally, when I was including the Sheriff's Department, I would say that the essential services would, in the model after other counties that have done this, and I believe that Clockamas County is one of them, that the essential services scheduled their furlough days much as they scheduled their vacation days or planned sick days. And everybody in the whole county took a furlough day, and the county was basically closed. The doors shut and a sign on the door saying the services are closed today because of furlough days. My recommendation also had a caveat of saying that, and that I did not feel that having furlough days should just be a cost-saving measure. I thought it should have a purpose, and that purpose was that this county needs more revenue, and that the county spends its energy trying to pass a sheriff's levy or some other levy to bring in revenue so that we would not have to cut pay for our employees. So my recommendation was based mostly on the fact that to get a balanced budget as a last chance effort, and that that furlough day was to basically just send a very strong message that we're out of money, and that we should really be trying to find a revenue and not just cut days to save money. I completely oppose that kind of an idea. You could drag that one on for years, and it doesn't really solve the problems. It just hurts the morale of your employees.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Per Mr. Scafo's comments, and public testimony we had from Mr. Lynn earlier today, how can we wrap our minds around what the unanticipated and unintended consequences? I mean, we just, we just don't know, and we don't even have a wise approach to how we might structure this. That makes me real nervous, and I'm afraid, at least concerned, the message it would give the public, and I, yeah, I'm just.
Okay, there's a member of the public who would like to speak, and if it's okay, we're going to do that. Mr. Terry Brayer?
Terry Brayer, Curry County, Naseka Beach. Back in the 1990s, I worked for the California Department of Corrections, and we had three straight years of doing furlough days. And I can tell you, working in the Department of Corrections 24/7 positions, I was scheduled to rotate days off, and we had to do the furlough days even in the prison system, which generated overtime, of course, in the prisons. So it didn't work out well for my budget. But on top of that, basically what you're doing, you could, in any department, set up a rotation schedule so that you could keep the county open, and would not have to close down the county on a Monday or Friday or whatever day, by having each department head set up a schedule to rotate people's days off. But what you're sending a message is that you're going to balance the budget on the back of the county employee, and it is a 5% pay cut to the ad employee for if you take 12 days a year out of that employee's pay. Additionally, as Louise just said, it is a real morale killer for your county employees to say that you're going to take 5% of their pay cut. Now, that had to be negotiated with the unions in California, and one year it took an additional six months for it to go through the negotiation and court issues to have it resolved, that yes, they could do that, but it was an expensive situation, and all, and like I say, I would be opposed to doing a furlough that you don't negotiate in advance of, like saying, okay, we want to negotiate for 2017, 2018, a furlough day into your contract, because like I say, it is a pay cut for the county employee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman, any comments?
Well, I'd just like to comment, I believe that we have looked into the contracts, and it does have a clause in the contract about financial position of the county, and that usually when you have to negotiate that with a union is because they have specified in their contract how many days a year that they are going to work. My experience has been working with teachers that do have a stated amount of days in their contract. We did have to get a memorandum of understanding with them to be able to cut days at a school district, but we did not have to negotiate with the classified staff because it had the same kind of financial considerations of the entity comment within their contract, which most of those contracts do, and it takes care of that kind of a situation in furlough days.
Council Huddle, do you have anything to add on our specifics here?
Well, it's, talking about the financial condition of the county, I think the courts would look at the question of when you have a carryover, to the extent of the dollars we're talking about, are the furlough days, you know, really related to the financial condition of the county? And so I can't, I think that's going to be the question, and I think it may come down to a third party making that decision. And again, as Mr. Brayer pointed out, at considerable expense, et cetera. And, you know, I suppose increasing my workload and cutting my days would make it harder for me to defend that for the county.
All right, Sheriff asked to speak, and then Sam, and then Commissioner Boyce.
Mr. Scafo first.
Just want to take a second, and I get you guys why you don't want to use road funds, and I don't either, but here's a way to fix this, and you can fix it today. Last year, we didn't use any road funds, okay? We were asked to use, I asked for not to use it, we were able to do it without it. This year, we were allocated 1.7 million for patrol. By not spending and watching what we buy and spend and everything just in order to run our business, we didn't spend the whole 1.7 million dollars this year. We spent maybe 1.4 by the end, and so there's about $300,000 that we did not spend, we were allocated and budgeted for. Just take the $94,000 out of carryover of that. We're still under what we would have spent this year, if we would have spent it all. And you don't have to take any money from the rest of the county. You don't have to cause problems with people's paychecks or anything like that. It's pretty simple. You're already using what, you're only using what was already budgeted for. That's all I got to say.
Sam Scafo?
No, I just want to point, I guess, I don't know how interesting it is, but until that, until that carryover money exceeds the amount that we've taken from the road fund over the years, it's road fund line. Thanks.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, I just remain firmly against furlough days. I feel like we're being reactive instead of responding to our responsibilities here. Perhaps you'd from the hip, and, I mean, all the reasons have been stated. I haven't heard a good reason why we should do that yet, and it goes way beyond just. Mr. Brayer, I was taking notes when you were talking, because you made some excellent points there, and, yeah, I'm happy to have your input from the experience and background you have. This will not help the citizens, it will not be good for the county, it will not be good for the employees, and the message we send to them is, wow. I'm really concerned with, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Huxley, and then Carl King.
Two points, and I had hoped that the Budget Officer would have been quick on this, but on the, or to address this.
Okay, let's stay on point here. Come on, Commissioner Huxley, go ahead.
But on the road funds, as it was explained to me a couple of years ago, they don't work like the general funds in that they're not committed or transferred into, it's like if you don't use it, it doesn't go as a carry forward, it just never ultimately is transferred to be used for road patrol. In other words, they'll go for, I don't know whether it works on a quarter basis or six months or whatever, but when it's all said and done at the end of the year, if they were budgeted a million dollars and they used of road fund, and they ultimately used, because in this case, they weren't able to hire the total number of deputies that were approved to be hired. There's, you know, a huge part of that savings. But if they don't use those funds, it's not like they moved them over to an account and then move it back as a cash, you know, as a carry forward. It just never moves over to begin with. So if it was $700,000 that was actually used, that's all that ultimately is moved there. It doesn't, a million dollars go and then 300,000 come back. But, and that's been my understanding.
Carl King?
Yeah, just two points. The total that has been taken from the road fund over the recent time period is $5 million. As the Roadmaster told us, this year, just to maintain, not to approve, just to maintain our roads, he needs to use 2 million of his reserve. I'm not going to take money out of the road fund. At the same time, I'm not inclined to support furlough days, for the same reason I'm not sitting here saying we need to talk about whether the treasurer should be part time. I think there's some very painful decisions that are going to have to be made next year. I think those decisions need more study. I prepared for this morning thinking we were done with the list of challenges I was about to make to the Board of Commissioners of things they need to do between now and next May, when we sit here and try to balance the budget again. And one of those things would be furlough days and other things of that nature. So I'm not inclined to vote in support of the furlough days. I'm not, I won't vote. I'm not, I won't vote to spend road funds. So if this motion fails, I will ask for my table motion then to be adopted and we can send Louise out to do all the work she has to do.
Sam Scaffel? No, don't worry about it. You're, okay. Commissioner Boyce?
I apologize for my outburst there of laughter, but I interpreted that, perhaps you can correct me, but I interpreted that that was an insult to Ms. Coleman, that she should have caught it quicker. And I just, I understand, Commissioner Huxley, that maybe that's your style of relating, but I just, I just saw that as an insult and I'm trying to understand why you would say that in a, in a public place. And it was just disappointing.
Commissioner Huddle?
Your comments about my ethics are perfectly fine, right, Mr. Boyce?
Point of order. Sure, so that's what I was getting at.
I'd be glad to debate you on that anytime, publicly, anytime.
Point of order.
Carl King?
So really, we're, we're on the budget here, Mr. Chair and...
Obviously, this is a, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's it. It's, it's just, we need to exhale a little bit, you know.
Mr. Chair, did anybody else in the room or anybody else on the committee see it as an insult?
Mr. Boyce, you're not talking about the budget now. Can we get back on the budget?
Maybe I misinterpreted, that's all I'm offering. Maybe I didn't.
I, I, you know, to your point, I think we all saw something, but it's better not to let those, let stuff kind of get out of the range of what's manageable. If I may, just a comment. I hope it's appalled. As I look around, each of us, I see that we, I think, I see that we've got a perspective on where this county is and where it's going. And I think there's a lot more unanimity on what we want to do, want us, how we want to see the county succeed. It's just maybe, maybe it's as simple as our time period. We're, we're talking about, are we looking out one year? Are we looking out five years? Are we looking at eventualities as things play out? Are we just trying to get through a year? I, I think our arguments are not such that if we win, somebody else loses, or if we lose, somebody else wins. It's just a, a way of getting somewhere. So I, the, the emotion that comes with this is natural. This is tense stuff. We're all trying to accomplish what our perspective is and they're in conflict. There's just no question about it. And as far as I know, our government's process in general have no other way of dealing with that than voting. And somebody's going to lose, somebody's going to win. We understand that we get a chance to vote again. We understand that you all, as commissioners, get a chance to correct any glaring errors or any errors that they see in this process. So let's, I, I think we're five minutes before a break and there are two people that want to speak. Let's do those and then take a break. Ms. Coleman, you are next.
Well, I just kind of went, wanted to make the comment that when I recommended the furlough days, it was to get direction from the Board of Commissioners for the proposed budget. And, and if, if they had gone that direction, it would have allowed me to speak to each department head and everything before I actually brought this proposed budget to you. To do a furlough day type action at the last minute, I, I simply could not agree with that. It, it doesn't have the planning and the structure that I would want, wanted to have to bring a proposed budget to you with furlough days already in it. And I, I think I stated it Friday that furlough days should probably be studied for the future, but I, I really am not recommending it to happen on this budget at this time.
Commissioner Gold?
I'll make everybody happy. I'm going to rescind my motion simply because I think it needs to be studied further. It's not that I am against furlough days in principle, but I think we need more time to study it. So I'm going to rescind it.
Carl, you seconded that motion?
Withdrawn, I second.
All right, we're up against a, seriously, we're not, yes, we are against a break.
Furlough day motion.
Oh, okay, so.
So are you going to rescind your second?
Do you need, you need me to second?
No, you need to rescind it.
If Commissioner Gold made a motion, you seconded it. Commissioner Gold, after the discussion, has moved to, or withdraw her motion. And as a second, it's up to you whether the motion needs to vote or you withdraw it.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion also.
All right. So if, with your agreement, we'll take an early break, but we'll still meet back here at 15 after.
And Sam, are you going to go?
How much time you have until?
It's 11.
I can be here till noon. Let's, somebody, can somebody tell me who's going to be a clearinghouse for days available over the next, the next, until, let's say, June? What would be your last possible date, please?
In order for me to do the paperwork to get it ready for publication, because it's a weekly paper, I have to have that by June 14th?
Okay, it's a very...
I have to get it ready for that publication. That means I would, I would think that a week before that, the 7th, would be the last
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sandcastles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered, but walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or, or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away. Or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yawhats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yawhats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rodendrins along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayusla River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayusla River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one, but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this all-American road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There's little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into... Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves in the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you.
Okay, we're back in meeting. There's a sheet going around that has May in a June calendar blank, except for the days of the week and the dates. And the instructions, please, are to fill in when you're not available and write small enough so that if there's more than one person writing in a box, they can. We'll add to that the scheduled meetings for the commissioners, the scheduled, the announced meetings, any other meetings that come up, the important dates, if you would, when things have to be done by. And then try to find some, I hope it'll show us, guide us to a next time we can meet. All right? So, do you mind if we just do that now? Is there something so pressing that we've got Sam's gonna leave? We want to have him here until the end. Maybe we should give it to Sam now and then we'll-
He's done it.
He's done it? Good.
Okay, so if your name shows up here, it says "non-available."
Yeah, and if it turns out it's half a day, whatever indicator. Might be that we'll have mornings free, but not afternoons, what have you. If it's a whole day, just put your name. If it's "not available," put times "not available." And if there's any time next to your name, let's understand that as "not available." Any time you write on there, it's for "not available."
Let's hope my head remembers everything. Because I keep my calendar in my head. Okay, so...
Sure.
May's okay. June 3rd.
Just as a, another topic that maybe all are considering. We've got a lot of material that has numbers and budget stuff on it that I think might otherwise be called waste. Can we give that to you? Are you gonna shred that material? You know, there are two budgets pronounced.
We recycle bins throughout the office's paper recycling.
Yeah, I'd like to lead that somewhere. Because last year's budget now and the first budget, our proposed budget, that's just wastepaper, I think.
Yes.
Along with all the contributions each of us have given to the others, so I'd be able to lead that. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to try this one more time. I know you guys make notes, so I would like to go through what I did to see if I'm missing anything or if you're surprised about anything that I did. So, can I go through that?
Sure.
While we're doing this calendar thing?
Well, the thing is, whoever's writing on there is not gonna be able to follow you.
Let me give it to you. I don't know that I'm finished yet. I have to look at some of my other calendars.
I'd like to be giving you my full attention, so.
I've got one more that I know I'm not gonna be here. Okay.
It's a good idea. I appreciate that, and if you could just hold off a second.
Okay.
Wait, Mr. Chair, while you're writing there. June 8th was really the only day I put down, and I could even get out of that. It's with the Forest Service and the Forest Collaborative, and it's a pretty important day, but not more important than this. So, I'm gonna say that I can be available any day.
So, do you want me to put, if necessary?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Commissioner Gold.
I kind of put something like that, too. I had an all-day meeting, but I'll get out of it if I have to.
But I did notice Mr. King was not available on that day, so I-
Which day?
June 8th, excuse me.
That's right.
Ms. Carlson, can you add my name to the 20th of June there also?
On the, what day?
20th of June.
20th of June?
It's not gonna matter, right?
That's not gonna matter.
Okay, good.
We better get it together before then. You guys better be better than that. Okay, so the 21st is the adoption. The 14th is publish the summary. And so, it'll have to be in the paper on the 20th-14th, which means I probably have to give that to the the summary on the, like, the 12th, because they have to schedule it into their paper in order to publish it on Wednesday. So, in order to have that summary, I probably need a couple of days. So, really, I think the 8th is the very last day, which looks like a good portion of you guys are gonna be gone on the 8th anyway. So, I stand by. I would really like to be no later than the 7th to have this approval.
Excuse me, through the 7th or to the 7th?
No later than through the 7th.
Through the 7th, thank you.
It's the 7th of Wednesday?
Yes.
And that's a BOC meeting, isn't it?
Yes. How does the calendar look for May 5th and 6th? Or June 5th and 6th?
There's a couple of people who can't be here on the 6th. I don't know who hasn't filled it out.
I haven't.
Did I put my name on the 6th?
Yes.
Okay. I know I have a doctor's appointment. So, the plan is to basically give you the printout by this Thursday, and that we would, is there, everybody can make it to a meeting next Tuesday, correct?
Uh huh.
That would be the 30th.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Carl, you're gonna be here the 30th?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna assume, thank you. No, no, that's great, that's great.
Yeah, 10 a.m. start, it's a, you know, a three-day weekend and first day back, so...
Yeah.
I don't want to start at 9:00. And I'm thinking, start at 9:00 because if it goes into all day, it seems like there's so many breaks and stuff, we don't really get much chance to work.
I'm open.
Well, we could start at 9:00. I'm up early. Does that matter? You could pretend to be me then, for the first hour and a half. I have dogs I've gotta take care of. I've already had a day's worth of work before I came here today.
Has it been agreed, or that Thursday there will be, or not yet?
Still, one more here, and unfortunately, unless I give away some non-refundable tickets, it's gonna be a problem creating.
I have mine on. Who doesn't have theirs on? I thought he was looking at me again, and I have it on.
That was me.
Didn't you take your own class?
I didn't.
You know what? I'm glad everybody makes mistakes. Isn't that great? Isn't that great? We're not perfect yet. At least, I'm trying not to walk away with it.
Do you mind standing there and then making some recommendations?
So, I believe we still have a tabled motion, correct?
That's correct.
So, on the theory that we make and approve some type of motion like that, I am confident that I can get you the refreshed proposed budget. What it'll have is, it'll still have the proposed column, and then it'll have the approved filled in. That doesn't mean it's approved yet, but I can't change a proposed numbers, so I'm gonna put it in the approved column. So, you get the same document, only it'll have two columns filled in. One, our discussion so far, and then one, the proposed that was given to you. And if we do that, if we can meet on Tuesday, to tell me if you still have any questions about any of those numbers in that approved column, and then if there are no questions and you guys are all satisfied, then we could probably make the move to approve, and I'll have the numbers ready for you also that day in case we do do that, of the numbers you need to make that motion.
I have a couple of questions. Tuesday, May, that's in May?
May 30.
May 30, all right. I'll not be here. And won't, when can we pick up the budget? What's the earliest we can get it and spend some time with it?
On Thursday.
On Thursday of what May? What date?
The 25th.
The 25th. This Thursday.
So, you're saying it can be available Thursday?
For everybody to look at.
The 25th. Will we have copies to take home?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm sorry, I guess I was focused on something else.
I'll have the refreshed budget for you by Thursday.
And so, you're saying then you're recommending that we meet on the 30th? Any chance of doing it on the 29th?
29th is a holiday. It's Memorial Day.
Silly me. Completely off the radar.
Azalea Parade Festival.
Well, I, if-
Can you call in?
I will be in the air on the 30th. What time of the day on the 30th?
Whatever time you guys want to.
If you can make that at 9:00 a.m., I think I might be able to do it. I have to drive to Medford. Hey, that'll work.
Okay.
That'll work.
If we do it at 9:00 a.m., what time do you have to be in Medford?
No, I guess we're flying out the 1st, so it doesn't matter. I can get there at midnight and still get up and fly out the 1st. We're going to stay in a hotel and then leave.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question. So, Louise, you think you could have the budget document ready by Thursday?
Yes. For everybody to have a look at. I'm not sure if we need to meet, but I could have it available to hand out to everybody.
Well, I'm wondering, again, the five, six days, I couldn't remember how many days it was that the board of the Budget Committee looked at the original document. Is it possible if you were to present it to them on Thursday? Are you all gonna be here Thursday, or no?
Can be. I'm supposed to be in an all-day meeting, but I can get out of it if I have to. And, I may not be happy, but-
I've been waiting a long-
Mr. Brand has to leave at noon.
I've been waiting a long time for this appointment.
Which one, on the Thursday?
On Thursday at noon, but morning's free.
Yeah. You know, we've spent a good number of, I don't know if Louise can go through. There were changes, you'd be presenting the changes.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what the changes I made, hopefully, before we leave today. And I encourage you to look for those changes in the approved columns. I think the reason that we're, I'm allowing them a long weekend to be able to-
Because you're in the school, and the schools always give the students the homework assignment before the holiday weekend.
That's right.
Okay, that's your following protocols.
I have a history with school.
Okay.
I don't do that. It's so nice.
Sorry, that was levity. I apologize.
That's what happens, it happens. Get over it.
Have we reached a kind of an idea that we're gonna operate under? Yes, Ms. Huxley?
I'm not sure. So, who, are we leaning towards Thursday, but the one of the six?
I thought we were still on the 30th.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm looking at 30th and said Thursday. Tuesday, the 30th.
Let me add this to it. If it turns out that the only time, if there's a chance we can look at this budget, and I think you're implying we'll have had an idea of what to look for, so it isn't gonna be, have to go line by line over days.
If, I mean, I can also email the list to everybody, too, so that they can look for those things. But I'd like to go over it with you guys in case I miss something.
So, if we can meet here early?
9:00?
Get the-
Thursday or the 30th?
On the Thursday, on Thursday.
Thursday is the 25th?
Get the documents we want, and then adjourn, take some time to look them over, come back if we have to talk about them as a group. do that and try to vote on it before, uh, you know, I'll, I'll just cancel that appointment on Thursday or see if...
Oh, no, no, no.
No, we'll be done.
But if we get done earlier, then that's the best of all worlds, so is there a way to try to make that work? The, the thing we're giving up is sitting as a group and going over that line by line and discussing again.
Is...
But we're giving up reviewing too, having time to review it, right?
It's a hundred and forty pages.
Commissioner Huddle?
Thanks, it's counsel, I'm, I think, Counsel Huddle. So the question for Louise, here's, and again, I, I'm concerned, cause I won't be here the following week, and I'd like to help you guys as much as I can, but if Louise is able to present to you the revisions with an explanation of what they are, I think on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at roughly nine o'clock in the morning, you will have a number of hours, you may still be able to make your noon, at least by the time your appointment is, you'll know whether you guys can get there or whether you'll need to perhaps come back on the thirtieth, and then while you have the document for review, you'll have some context for reviewing it, so the review won't be just simply on your own, you'll, you'll have some... So that, so I'm thinking, meet on the twenty-nineth, or twenty-fifth at nine AM for a few hours, Louise walk you through it. If you have a comfort level, that's fine, if you need more time, that's fine, but I would hate to just give it to you and have you come back on the thirtieth and then go through it, because I think they're missing an opportunity there, and that's just, again, and... So I think, Tom Huxley, I think that would might allow for the review you want to have, but give it some context as well, and you can have, I'll call it maybe two more bites at the apple, to use the phrase, but that's about it.
And she said, uh, Ms. Coleman said that she would be point, Colstrom will be pointing us at the changes and/or any surprises, and/or. So, I think...
Yeah.
There's no reason not to trust that that can work, it isn't like we're voting on something we don't know, we're, maybe not by memory, but we have looked through it, and, and if these are the changes we can trust, I would guess that that's what we're gonna be doing shortly, or briefly, or relatively briefly on Thursday morning. It's, I just have to be able to be in Crescent City at two-thirty, I'm not locked into noon or something. Yes, sir.
I saw Mr. Schaffel hesitate, I wonder, could we just ask him to call in? Is that, would that work for you, just for that first hour, so I think, I'm guessing, but I'm, I'm somewhat confident that...
On Thursday?
Yeah.
I, I could be here Thursday.
Oh, you, you did, I'm sorry, okay, great.
Everybody could be here Thursday, except for, um, uh, Chair, Chair couldn't be here. From noon to not, to, from noon after.
I'm having time for a two-thirty appointment.
Are, are you, and then you're available?
I'm here this Thursday.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
So we're talking about meeting at nine o'clock Thursday until noon, and if we're done, we're done, if not, we'll return on the thirtieth with the chairman calling in if need be.
And the only question I would have for Louise is, would you be able to email them the, the budget document the Wednesday evening then, before the Thursday?
Well, um... I, I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can email that, what I can email you is the list of changes that were made.
That's all we need.
We've got the original budget, so all we have to do is, if you give us page numbers or something like that to give us a hint, that'd be great.
I could just tell you what, yeah, I can kinda tell you where, but sometimes, you know, if I said, okay, well, we put, um, Commissioners, uh, County, um, uh, Manager in the BOC office, that affected so many funds, I'm not gonna give you page numbers on all those, no. I got, just gonna say I did that task.
Okay, if, if I may, let's leave that, this discussion right now, let's listen to what you wanna tell us, and we'll get a sense of what's gonna be coming from Ms. Colstrom in the future, and then try to get that information in before Sam.
We have a motion on the table, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion on the table.
I move that we take that motion off the table.
Second fire motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
So you have the floor, if you'd like to educate us as to what?
Well, I, I think that we should go ahead and deal with the motion, tabled motion, um, that's now back, and do that, and then I can give you a complete list of what, uh, my instructions were due to the proposed budget.
This is Carl's tabled motion?
Yes.
Would you repeat the motion, please, Mr. Joslin?
Let's start it up, we have two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand approved debt, we'll use two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of general funds and ninety-four thousand of carryover replace all revenues that come from road funds, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
To begin a balance budget for special.
Present balance budget for special.
And then there's, for me, still remains that nine-hundred-and-four dollars, which in the mid, it's a small amount, but I, I think Carl said that he included that, and, uh, the motion is not reflecting that.
The ninety-four thousand, ninety-six dollars.
The, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And ninety-four thousand and ninety-six dollars on the second half of that.
And there was a second, so we'll go back to the roll call vote.
You were the original second guy.
We haven't voted to take it off the table yet.
That's correct.
All right, so we are now voting to take it off the table, right?
Yes.
Let's do that with a hand vote, uh, all in favor of taking Carl's motion off the table, so it's voteable. Unanimous, Mr. Joslin? You missed, or Commissioner Huxley?
But, but we did take exactly that motion and the dollars, we seemed to be, you know, fluctuating with...
I think the motion reflects that we're dealing with the dollars that we know. It's the two-twenty-five in breakage that was reported to us, and it's the ninety-four thousand, ninety-six, which was what remained of road funds once we took care of that, so I think...
Is that the motion that, that we tabled?
Yes, it's to balance the budget.
That is the same motion and the dollars that we tabled?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, uh... And so we've had time for discussion on this, now the roll call vote, please.
Could you remember voice?
Oh, wait, wait. We have a new motion?
No, it's the same.
I thought we just showed our hands on that.
So take it off the table.
Okay, so, please forgive me, please, uh, tell me what we're voting on here.
We're voting on my motion to take the two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in breakage of general fund money.
Yes, that was the original motion back, I know where we're at now, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Could you remember voice?
No.
Could you remember Huxley?
I, I request clarification of exactly what this motion is. I'm not positive enough to, to vote your little name.
Would you mind, Carl, if, um, Ms. Coleman, Colstrom gives this a run?
Um, according to the handout this morning, um, there is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-four dollars of, um, more revenue than expenditures. So the motion is to take all of the, um, road fund transfers out of the general fund, which is three-hundred-and-twenty thousand, which will then leave a deficit of, um, revenue of ninety-four thousand and ninety-six. So the motion is to add that ninety-four thousand, ninety-six to the beginning fund balance revenue line to balance the budget. The, the, yes, the carryover, um, revenue line.
Unan- taken from the unanticipated carryforward?
Taken from, yes.
Okay, I understand it now, so my vote would be yes.
Okay, that, that's... This is important, let's make sure that we all are comfortable that we understand what we're doing.
Could you remember Gold?
Yes.
Could you remember King?
Yes.
Could you remember Scaple?
No.
Could you remember Brand?
Yes.
Motion carry five to one.
Five to two.
Four to two.
Oh, I'm sorry, four to one.
Now, as I understand it, you've gotten what you requested, you, you know how, as far as we know, we think these are the final instructions for changes, I, did you have a question, Counselor? Okay.
So I get to go over my thing?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you guys ready? That was a long time coming. Okay, so, um, when we started on, um, Monday, there was a, a vote to put forty thousand dollars into professional fees in non-departmental, and remove, uh, forty thousand dollars from the other materials and supply line in non-departmental. On Friday, the vote was to amend that to, um, just to remove the forty thousand dollars from the other materials and supplies and not add forty thousand dollars to professional fees for the efficiency study. So that's one of the items. Second item was to, um, I believe also on Monday, to add twenty-four hundred dollars to the Harbor Substation to keep the patrol, to keep patrol at the station, but on Thursday, uh, you voted to restore it completely to eleven thousand dollars' worth of expenditures. The only revenue in that account is twenty-four hundred dollars coming from juvenile, so that added six thousand... If I can read this right, six thousand, three hundred dollars, I believe, to, seven hundred dollars to, uh, the general fund.
Can I make a comment on that? I talked to, uh, Captain Espinoza, and he told me that the Sheriff's Department was able to come up with the Harbor Substation without going into the general fund.
And that was discussed at the time, but they, you guys still voted to do that. Um, the, the money that the sheriff came up with was the Justice Reinvestment Ga- Grant, and using that grant, which is a two-year grant and may not be renewed, and so I guess you guys put it back just to the general fund, and... That was my instruction.
I, you know, I would make, at some point in this conversation today, a motion not to do that, to use the, cause that was ultimately what, what should be done, regardless of all the different confusing, you know, conversations we've had. They, the funding is available, it was always available through the Senate bill or the Justice Reinvestment Grant, and to use that money to fund that, so at some point to, in, in our discussions today to, to do that.
I, I, I'm lost in the forethoughts of the objectives here.
And not, and not take it from, and not take general funds to fund the eleven thousand dollars.
Not take general funds?
That's correct.
Well, I thought we, 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 there were road funds in there.
Pardon me?
There was twenty, there was two-thousand-four hundred dollars of road funds, but...
I'm saying, the two-thousand-four hundred, yes, but not the, the balance, to take that from funds that the Sheriff's Department has acknowledged they have to fund the balance.
Um, right now, in the proposed budget is, in the general fund, is twenty-four hundred dollars revenue coming from juvenile to pay for twenty-four hundred dollars' worth of the data, um, costs of, of having at that station. What's in the Justice Reinvestment Grant is funding the rest of the data and the utilities that are the other costs of that, of the substation, and some office supplies, I believe. Um, so, right now, the substation is funded through the transfer from juvenile and the Justice Reinvestment Grant, which is in the federal grant, uh, fund, fund to fifty. Now, if...
How many dollars is that?
It's six, it's six thousand...
Six something.
It's on here, actually, six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars added, um, to... The total expenditure should be eleven thousand dollars, so, yeah, I, I think that it's, it's, uh, eleven thousand dollars minus twenty-four hundred dollars.
That leaves eighty-six hundred.
Eighty-six hundred, that's right, I was trying, I was thinking sixty-eight and it wasn't...
I was told specifically by Captain Espinoza that the funds were there, that they could take care of it, within the Sheriff's Department, without having to go to the general fund.
And it's not in the Sheriff's Department, it's in the Justice Reinvestment Grant, which is under the Sheriff's Department. So...
In effect, do we go back to the way you have it proposed now?
Yes.
I thought that was the understanding.
Okay, cause now I was told to move eleven thousand dollars expenditure into the general fund for the, for the Harbor Substation.
That, that was your motion, was it not? Do you, do you understand and...
If, if the sheriff has the funding without the general fund, then I think you bring us a budget that shows that on Thursday, and that, that, that would be...
Okay, as long as it's...
My motion was intended to keep it open.
Okay.
If they, if they will keep it open without general fund money, then that's fine.
Yeah, and I specifically asked that question to Captain Esp- Espinoza, and then I told others what he had told me, so...
No, that's fine, fine by me.
Did, uh, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the committee last Friday had asked me to check with, uh, Officer Denny, and, uh, he come over this morning, I think that might be the connection here, that, uh, they, when I left a message with him, that this is how, they, apparently they jumped on a resolved, I'm guessing, but I think that's, but I agree with Mr. King, we probably need to see that in the budget, presumably Thursday, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Colstrom, is that gonna be insurmountable or...
No, that's fine, I just need to know which...
Good deal.
And that's one of the ones I did wanna make a comment on, because I, I thought it was strange that you would wanna take it out of a grant and put it in the general fund, um, when I was reading this this weekend, so...
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I, I think we're up against, at least in my case, the terminology use, I'm inadequate when it comes to talking to an accountant who's familiar with budget terms, and I'm trying to communicate, I just, not doing it very well.
Okay, so I just wanna get this clear with Commissioner Boyce, Sergeant Denny said that everything was taken care of, and they...
No, he just handed me a piece of paper during break, and, uh, I really didn't get to review it yet, but, and I was confused too, to, to clarify exactly what, what I was supposed to ask him, and, uh, but he clarified, I'm just assuming that this is the adjustment they made in the last couple of business days, but...
What did this piece of paper say?
Uh, I don't even have it, uh, see, he didn't leave it with me, so we were gonna take it up at a, as soon as possible, but, yeah. I, I, I didn't read it clear enough.
Okay, Commissioner Gold?
So then I would assume the direction to Louise would be to contact the Sheriff's Department to see how they want to adjust their budget to, to reflect...
That's fine by me.
Keeping the Harbor Substation open.
Is that, what, I mean, we're not, are we at the level where we're gonna have to do motions and we're back to changing the line item? Or are we just clarifying something, what, what, what's going on?
Um...
I think you're just given direction by consensus, and I feel like there's consensus on the Harbor Substation direction, unless someone wants to say, no, there's not, or something.
To keep it in the general fund or to keep it in the investment grant? It's the, the, the concern, the, what, what the Sheriff's Department has already told me by budgeting it into the Justice Reinvestment Grant, is that's where they are funding it, so I don't know what the question is.
Okay.
Um, either, it's either gonna be there or it's gonna be in the general fund.
I, I think the consensus is that you will bring back the budget document showing the Harbor Substation being remained open, as per working with the Sheriff's Department on how they propose to solve that, but...
Okay.
I see, how shaky the argument is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, everything will be reviewed.
And then we'll look at the line items, expecting that we'll see either that SB, whatever that number has been previously, or terminology to the effect of a Justice Re- Justice Reinvestment Grant, we'll still see the juvenile at the twenty-four hundred, but we will not see road fund reserves.
No, we'll, no, there's not gonna be...
Commissioner Gold?
Okay, so with that, the amount remaining in the general fund was two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-four dollars. Now it would be two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-four dollars with that eighty-six hundred added in there, is that correct?
It would reduce the amount that we would need to take from the carryover.
From the, um, carryover. Okay, by eighty-six hundred dollars, by, that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, right, and right now it's sixty-two fifty, according to my schedule, cause I have eighty-six fifty in total expenditures, so...
Everybody on board, were you gonna say something, uh, Counselor?
I'm sorry I had to divert everything, but I want... I'm sorry I had to divert everything, but I wanted to get that clear.
Well, I, I, if I'm, then, I'm trying to, again, just help, but Commissioner Gold, earlier, the, the budget committee directed the county accountant to bring back something with those specific numbers per committee member Kings, and it had a specific number of unallocated general fund or unappropriated general fund plus a percentage from carryover. It sounds like during this last walkthrough, if you find anything else that would go back, that you could reduce the carryover amount contributed proportionally, something like that?
Just put it back in carryover.
Does the, does the committee understand that, that, that it's kind of a rolling motion to amend that second part of committee member Kings? Okay.
That's fine by me.
Again, and we're just trying to get direction to the county accountant, so she knows where to put money when she finds it during this last walkthrough here.
Commissioner Huxley?
Just another reason that ultimately for us to look at the final draft document and be sure, but that's why that document, you know, when we do get it, is so critical in my opinion.
Okay, so, all right, I'm, I'm on board with that, that was my intention too, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, so the next, the next one was, on my notes was the Salishan trip for the finance director, the second, um, uh, government finance officers meeting in the spring, and I took that out, so it's, it is reflected in the reduction of travel expenditures in the finance admin fees. Um, this next list, thing on the list I have is on the commissioners' budget to reduce all, um, travel budget to four thousand five hundred dollars, and I took that to include the four thousand dollars assigned vehicle plus the five thousand seven hundred dollar travel budget, take, um, from ninety-seven hundred dollars down to forty, four thousand five hundred dollars.
Yep.
Okay, the next one, it was in parks, and you know what, I really do not have a lot of notes on this, but my notes are to add to the revenue of carryover ten thousand dollars and to put into expenditures operating contingency of ten thousand dollars, and that's my notes, and so I did that too. Doesn't really affect anything.
I was going to say, that's a...
That in parks is not in the general fund, so...
Right.
Um, my next one was in occupancy, correct the unemployment cap projects for all funds, take out of all accounts, and I did that, and then the next part of that was to make the transfer from the general fund, other requirements for the dollar amount that was in, in the capital projects, uh, unemployment lines in the general fund, a total of twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-four, and to make a transfer from the general fund, other requirements to occupancy as a revenue from the general fund, um, so I did that part. That was fun. In planning, uh, the motion was to move the planning department to the general fund, which, uh, used nine thousand seven oh four of, um, general fund monies, it actually come out a little bit less than that because of all the adjustment to all the admin fees, of which the planning department pays admin fees. Building, um, basically just to deduct from their, um, carryover line to balance, um, because I have, that one has to be a, a zero balance, it's, it's a fund that stands on its own, so I did that. It was a, it's not exactly the number I have in my notes, because once again, there's admin fees and things that affected that number, so I did what I had to do to make it zero. For the sheriff, my note was to bring eleven thousand dollar budget back to harbor substation, um, expense only, in other words, uh, no other revenues moving over there, um, and then today we said to keep it in the justice reinvestment grant, and then we also said to talk to the sheriff to make sure exactly where we're going to put that. Um, on the commissioners, um, the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, commissioners on this page, which was earlier in the week, I just had a, a note that I gave you the amounts to, um, for the county manager at different salary levels and how much that would cost with all costs, so I did have a star beside the one that was eighty thousand. Um, on IT, it said to recalculate IT services to all funds and to keep, um, twenty-seven thousand, one ninety-four in hardware, two thousand eighty in software, twenty-one thousand, eight twenty-eight in maintenance, fifty-two hundred dollars in maintenance, and to bring it up to sixty thousand dollars, three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight in non-capital equipment. Under road, um, transfer from the general e-fund, equipment self-insurance fund, uh, transfer to the general fund, sixty thousand dollars. Uh, under council, reduce, um, budget dues, five hundred, professional training, four hundred, travel, um, meals and lodging, four hundred and forty-three dollars, other, um, materials and supplies, five hundred, copying, seven hundred, for a total of two thousand five hundred and forty-three.
Which one was that?
Council's budget. And that was admin fees. On unemployment, move to the general fund, non-departmental, one hundred and twenty-seven Under purrs, leave, um, for now, no, we didn't touch the purrs count. Title III, there was a, a balancing account, there'll still be more balancing account, because as I balance, say like GIS, there's a, if I, when I changed, um, the payroll and administrative fees to GIS, it, it, um, the amount that comes in from title one is to make that account zero, so if it made that account, uh, have more revenues and expenditures and I needed to reduce the amount that transferred from title III, therefore I had to go back to title III and reduce the amount that I transferred, so you know all that, I did all Airport operations, um, amend the repairs and maintenance ground to, from ten thousand, I believe it was ten thousand three hundred and forty-seven to two thousand, and, uh, transfer the eight thousand three hundred and forty-seven to the general fund, non-departmental revenue. The airport grant, what can I say, love that one. Uh, BOC office, um, add the county manager at eighty thousand plus benefits, um, and add five thousand dollars for, uh, professional fees for the search, um, uh, costs of the, for the, um, county manager. Under commissioners, have the total salary be sixty-six, four sixty-nine for all commissioners. And so like on the Friday afternoon, general discussion, I have non-departmental, remove the forty thousand dollars per survey, professional fee from the budget from Monday, leave the sixty thousand dollars in the materials and services line and memberships, um, and do the memberships in non-departmental, there was no change, and that's the list that I have. If anybody else has any other adjustments they, that we talked about or suggested, I'd like to know before I give you that proposed, or the, um, refreshed.
Commissioner Huxley?
A question to, to the budget officer, you'll, and you'll, you'll email us once you reduce this down to what you just went through there?
Yeah, I'll, I will, um, you know, I made notes, but I didn't write which days, sometime, a couple of times I did, and I know that which ones I did on Monday, um, but I can just write to, this is a list that it happened in, so I could write you the list that I, it happened in and write notes below it of what happened later on those.
Any other questions for Mrs. Colstrom? Ms. Colstrom? That very last motion we did, it was, you didn't mention that one, but...
The what?
The very last motion that we...
Oh, and then the very last one from today was to, um, to take the two hundred thousand dollars of road funds out of this, um, sheriff's civil and patrol and a hundred and twenty thousand out of the sheriff's nine-one-one or communications, um, take those two revenues out and incidentally take them out of the road fund reserve, and in the general fund, um, put, if, if I need to put or take substation out, I think that the general consensus was whatever is needed to balance from there to put to the, uh, non-departmental revenue that is the carryforward balance.
Uh, Commissioner Huxley?
A related question, but not, okay, I think several times during the week we've referred to the, the road fund reserves being committed, I won't say moved anywhere, but being committed, uh, one point seven million total, and I think just for clarification and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, I think the one point seven was one seven oh five or some, something like that, but in addition, in addition, it's not all, it was an additional one hundred and twenty thousand, let's not worry about where it was going, but the total was approximately one point eight two five million, not one point seven million, is that correct?
Plus the two thousand four hundred that went into harbor substation.
Okay, so it's, it is not one point seven, okay, thank you.
That was for patrol.
It's for my clarification.
And that's, and all of that is not being used again this year?
Correct.
So this budget committee and through working with the direction and, and the departments has come up with a way to present a balanced budget, at least a draft, without using...
Or committing that much, but it wasn't, I just heard the one point seven several times, it's, it's total for, from the road commitment, one point eight two five million.
And I think a lot of times when they were talking about the one point seven, they're talking about the amount that was brought over for patrol, and that is a correct number for patrol.
Correct, a total one point eight or two five or thereabout.
Carl King has the floor.
I move we adjourn until Thursday at nine o'clock. It's, it's time for the lunch break that is mandatory.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's, are you in favor?
Sure.
It's, it appears to be, uh, consensus, Mr. Jesuit?
Did, do I give this to Mr. Jesuit to hold the...
Yes, would you, might as well. Uh, well, wait, you, you hold on to it.
Oh, okay.
Would you like us to sign it like a year ago? Okay, so, nine o'clock on Thursday.